Township Franklin for July 16, 2025 in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice that this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark Dancy asked to be excused this evening, Councilman of Barson.
Here.
Theodore Chase.
Here.
Robert La Court.
Here.
Shaw Keller.
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Here.
Mahir Rafiq.
Here.
Charles Brown.
Here.
Robert Thomas.
Here.
And Chairman Rancini.
Here. Okay, so minutes, we have two sets. First one is a regular meeting for May 21st. Any comments, corrections, or?
Just Charles Brown can't vote on that.
Okay. Hearing no changes or comments, I will move to approve.
I'll make a motion.
You're going second, right? Okay.
Bob?
Yes.
Councilman of Barson.
Yes.
Theodore Chase.
Yes.
Robert La Court.
Yes.
Shaw Keller.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
And Chairman Rancini.
Yes. And same for the minutes for the regular meeting of June 4th. Any comments, changes, corrections anyone would like to bring up?
Just Mahir can't vote.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Councilman of Barson.
Yes.
Theodore Chase.
Yes.
Robert La Court.
Yes.
Shaw Keller.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
Charles Brown.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Chairman Rancini.
Yes. So while we don't have any discussion items, I wanted to take just a couple of minutes to talk to the board about the stormwater regulation video that we all have to watch and attest to the fact that we watched it. So I encourage you to do that. Christine has forms printed out. But I also wanted to practically speak a little bit about what that means for us in terms of board members and what our responsibilities are. And the first question I had, which I asked Darren, was what do we have to look out for? So I asked Darren just to take a minute or so to let us know what his office does in terms of review and what we should look for so that we're not asking a bunch of questions that maybe we don't need to. So, Darren?
Sure. Thank you. So, just so everybody's aware, what our office does is we do a full technical review of the stormwater regs. That's NJAC 7:8. That's with regards to water quality, quantity, recharge. For the board members, I think the bigger concern would just be in the types of BMPs, which is a best management practice, is being proposed, whether it be rain gardens, bio-retention basins, so they understand what's going to be seen in the neighborhood. In terms of technical data, that's something I do look at. I check it for both recharge reductions. I make sure there's the proper separation of the seasonal high water table. Now, one thing in the training seminar that was talked about was waivers and exemptions, variances. I just wanted to make sure the board is aware, that's different than a planning variance that you normally see come forward. And a variance like that, the applicant would have to do a mitigation plan. So hypothetically, let's just say they needed to recharge 1,000 cubic feet of stormwater, and they can only do 600 on their site, they would still be required to do the 400 cubic feet. Now, there's two ways they could approach it. One would be if the township has a mitigation plan area where there's an area in the same watershed where they could contact the township and use that watershed. Township doesn't have any plan set for developers for that, so the next best option would be the developer would have to own a property or have rights to a property in the same watershed. At that point, they could do the 400 cubic yards, or cubic feet of recharge. However, that site would now be deed restricted through the county clerk's office, and there couldn't be any development on it. In practical terms, that really came forward with the waivers and variances, I'd say with the green if a structure changes of the rules, which is about four years ago. In that time, the township has not received any applications requesting a waiver or variance. And in my experience, through all the other municipalities I've handled, I haven't seen one come forward. It's a very heavy lift because not only they need to dedicate other property for the BMP and for the stormwater management, but then they also have to give us a full plan that needs to be compliant when they reach the board. Because if the board were to grant the variance, the next step is we'd have to go to the county and state, and that would be due within 30 days. So this couldn't be something the board looks at and says, we approve this variance, you know, on the condition of resolution compliance of it being finished. That's why most developers don't want to take the risk of first doing a full design and then also trying to find a second piece of property for it. So that's just something that, if you did see it, it would be very apparent, involves my letter, but also the applicant's documents, because they would probably have to also notice for a separate property as well. They couldn't just notice for the property in hand.
Thanks, Darren. So in essence, as conscientious board members, of course, we would re-watch the second part of that video, and they give you all these questions you need to ask. In some, Darren is asking those, and it's in his report. And in the history that I've been on the board anyways, or at least he's been reviewing it, I never recall a waiver for stormwater being requested of this board, nor granted. So important to realize, just because obviously with the events on Monday, even those unfolding today, I actually see a lot of comments on social media, you know, and that are factually incorrect, where, you know, people say, oh, you know, because of the building. Well, we know that the stormwater regulations require that development reduce what would come off the property in its natural state. So, you know, and of course, there's technologies you'll see in the video about how water is retained and meet it out over time, et cetera, et cetera, directed over natural surfaces for recharge, et cetera. So I just wanted the board to understand that we don't need to, like, ask these questions that are being asked of our staff professionals who are engineers with the day job, and we would be apprised of that. So, any questions from the board about what we need to look for? Ted?
Well, I noticed there are a lot of applications, particularly in the north end of the township, that stated that all the soil here just doesn't recharge at all. Is that true, or what do they do then? I guess they have to get it all into the river.
So there's, there'd be two places that would go. First would be the soil maps that are put out by the state. That's the first place we check, and that's typically a type D soil, and that doesn't recharge. Now, what will happen is, in certain applications, an applicant will say, where they're in a type C soil, that it's acting as a D. And then my comment typically is, the BMP manual, which is the best management practice, has a Chapter 12 for soil testing, and I will ask them to do the proper testing to show that there is not enough recharge. And at that point, if they approve it, then they are exempt from recharge. But there's not much, that's kind of how the rules work on that.
What do they do with the water then?
They still have to do the reductions and retainage, it's just the recharge doesn't work as well. What you'll typically see is, you know how some bio-retention basins is fully recharged? They'll have some with underdrains just to keep the water moving over time, but it detains it within that basin for a period of time, so it's not taxing the system while the storm's at its worst peak.
All right. So again, if you have any questions, let me know, let Darren know, or Mark Healy, or whatever, as they come up. But it's a good video. I'm glad we're required to watch it. I learned a little bit, and hopefully you will too. So if you haven't had a chance to watch it, please do so. Christine has copies. If you don't have a printer of the form to sign that you did watch it, and if we can target by, if you haven't done it by tonight, and then certainly by the first meeting in August, let's not, let's not let that carry over into September, because then we have a little bit of a break. I don't think we come back until after Labor Day, so, yeah, let's not let that linger. So with that, before we go into the general public comment, NPH Real Estate that's being carried to September 3, 2025, notification will be needed. 500 Atrium we're hearing tonight, that was carried from June 4. And so then I'll make a motion now to open to the public for any general planning comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open to the public for any general planning comment. Any comments that you would like to ask of 500 Atrium application will be, the public will be reopened for that. Seeing no one coming forward, move to close, public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Matt, you are up.
Matt Flynn from Sabos, Shaw, Corsini, Warner, Gillespie, O'Grady, and Fisher, on behalf of the applicant, 500 Atrium LLC. The applicant's here tonight seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval with associated variances to construct two warehouse buildings, both just under 75,000 square feet. This proposal is conditionally permitted in the zone due to the zoning that was in place at the time the application was deemed complete. The property in question is designated as Block 468.01, Lot 21.07 in your municipal tax records, and it's better known as 500 Atrium Drive. With me tonight, I have four witnesses to provide testimony. I have a professional engineer, Craig Stires, who will describe the site plan and is prepared to address the comments in both your Board Engineer and Board Planner's Review Memorandums, and we acknowledge receipt of those. I have our architect, Brian DiBarbieri, our traffic engineer, Betsy Dolan, who I do not believe has arrived yet, and planner Kevin O'Brien to go over the variance proofs. So with that said, unless there are any questions of me, I'd like to have Mr. Stires sworn in and qualified.
So Matt, do you want to take care of the logistics or what we discussed earlier? Or you want to do that now?
Yeah, I think the purpose of tonight's meeting is going to be, we're going to put our testimony in the record. We acknowledge that the last plan revisions we did on this was back in late 2023. So this applicant has sat on the, the application sat on the vine for a little bit. So I think what makes sense, and what I talked to the chairman about before the meeting, was we'll put our testimony in, we'll go through the review comments, we'll take feedback from the board, and then we'll sort of assess where we're at after we're concluded our presentation this evening, because we do know that some comments were outstanding from the professional review memorandums.
Okay. And we do have a new date for you if we, when we get to that point. So I don't know if you want that an hour later, but either way, we.
Yeah, let's see where we're at, and then if I need a five-minute recess with my client, I'll request it.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. So Mr. Stires, I think you need to be sworn in by Mr. Biggelo.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
Craig Stires, S.T.I.R.E.S., 43 West High Street, Somerville.
And Craig, can you, I know you've been qualified by this board before, can you just quickly go through the benefit of your professional credentials, please?
I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I've had my professional license in New Jersey since 1993, and been before this board dozens of times.
And so your qualifications, your licenses is arched to date and current?
Yes.
Craig's, of course, accepted.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been before this board anyhow.
Great. So Craig, why don't we start your presentation by going through the existing conditions on the site?
Okay. First, on the screen, I have a aerial of the site. It's bounded in red. We have Atrium Drive in this location here, and actually, this is also Atrium Drive, but a cul-de-sac. The property boundary is actually these limits here. And then this line here is what constitutes Atrium Drive, but that is a private easement. So it's not a public right-of-way, it's, all of Atrium Drive is private. This location right here is the existing office building, and then you can see, north is in this direction. So in northeast of the building, you have a parking lot, and then southwest of the building, you also have a parking lot. To kind of work our way into, I just want a general overview of what we, what you're looking at.
Mr. Stires, just for the record, was that part of a submiddle, or is that going to be Exhibit A1?
That would be Exhibit A1.
Perfect. Thank you.
So again, the site is situated on the southeast side of Atrium Drive, just north of the intersection of Pier Street, and Pier Street is just off the plan right here. And then again, Pier Street comes in. And it's bounded by a multi-use building that fronts on Pier Street. You have 700 Pier Street right here, which is a vacant office building. This site here, which I will show you later on, is currently under construction for, I believe, approximately 450,000 square feet of warehouse space. This is a, the back end of an office building, and then you have the two hotels, a industrial site, another industrial site, and then another office building, which is part of the original Atrium Drive, or Atrium at Somerset subdivision. The lot's known as Lot 2107, Block 46801 on the township tax maps, also known as 500 Atrium Drive, and consists of 7.53 acres, which is the limits within the easement. So again, this is the private easement, so this is the 7.5 acres. The overall tract is approximately eight and a half, which includes Atrium Drive. Again, the property currently contains a vacant office building of approximately 211 square feet, 585 parking spaces. The existing building is approximately 35 feet from the easement line in this location, and the two parking lots are pretty much right on the easement line, so there is no quote-unquote setback to that easement line. There are currently four driveways coming off of Atrium Drive. There's one here, one here, one here, and one here. Where two are actually permitted by, in the ordinance. The current impervious coverage is 77.5%. The current FAR is .64. Going back to impervious coverage, as the board knows, 60% is permitted or required, and the FAR required is .5, and again, it's .64 right now. The lot was part of the original Atrium at Somerset subdivision, which was back, created back in 1982, and created Atrium Drive, again, where Atrium Drive comes through and then goes up to Davidson Avenue. These are all part of the original subdivision. These basins here were all part of the original subdivision and constructed back in the 80s. So these basins are the stormwater management for the subject lot, 700, 400, as well as the Hampton Inn, which is just off the map here. So these are all part of that stormwater management system. So that may complicate your video that you watched as I keep going. The tract is located in the B1 Business and Industry Zone, of which the proposed use is a permitted conditional use, as outlined in Mark Healy's review. Going to the proposed conditions.
We'll do A2. We'll do A2 for this one?
So what you see is, again, the subject lot is right here. We are proposing two warehouse buildings. This building is 72,213 square feet. This building would be 73,460 square feet. There would be parking on the north side of the smaller building, located right here, and then parking on the south side of the larger building along the southerly sideline. And then there'd be a loading court in between the two buildings, of which there'll be nine loading docks for each building, and two drive-in ramps, or one drive-in ramp for each building. As part of the, after the initial submission and part of the revisions, we added a fire lane along the back of the building. So the fire lane goes from the cul-de-sac and pretty much meets in with the loading court, and then a second one that would go behind the other building. The setbacks for, off of the main Atrium Drive, all comply for the buildings. The setback for the norally parking lot is 20 feet from the cul-de-sac, which is on the north side of the project. The impervious coverage will be, I checked through the numbers, I think we have 74 and change on the plans. Before the meeting, I checked through everything because there were some discrepancies in the zoning table. Came out to 75.27. All said and done, I think that was kind of, we should have caught that when we added the fire lane.
Yeah, and we'll talk about that as we go through.
Exactly. I just kind of wanted to document that as well.
So instead of 74.5, which you're proposing down from 77.5, which is existing, you're now saying it's 75.?
2.7.
2.7.
75.3.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
We are proposing 71 physical spots, and then with the two EV spaces, that would get us up to 73, which is required for Section 11233, 7D to B, which is parking spaces between 51 and 75 spaces would need two EV spaces, which we have. Again, nine loading berths for each building and one drive-in ramp for each building. I mentioned the coverage. The stormwater management, as I mentioned, this site was part of the original subdivision. So although you're watching this video, there is no stormwater management on the property. The stormwater management is actually handled with the two basins immediately to the right on the plan. So all of the stormwater existing is collected and run into those basins. We are doing the same, obviously, but just reconfiguring it.
Is there recharge in that basin?
No. So kind of like Darren discussed, we did testing for the building next door, and that's the other thing. You can see the Woodmont application, that's the large building on the right. That's what's under construction right now. We tested that site, there's nothing, there's D soil. Pool de l'oeuvre, which is further to the north, tested that site, that's a D soil. Same thing with the Hampton Inn, so basically, everything is D soils. So there is no recharge. On top of that, since we're actually reducing the coverage, we do not need to recharge. It only is triggered if you increase it by a quarter acre or more. But on top of that, we're reducing the coverage. So same thing with water quality, theoretically speaking, if you follow the state rules, we don't need to read or provide water quality. But keep in mind that we, this also drains into the canal, so that has an elevated, instead of 80% TSS removal, it's 95%. So as part of the design, we have incorporated manufactured treatment devices in the storm system. So between those and the basins, they kind of work in series, and you add up to the 95%. So the project is actually improving the water quality coming off the site.
And that would probably be a requirement at DNR Canal Commission anyway, so you would have that outside approval.
Which we do have, actually.
Right. And they're fairly, they're fairly rigorous in their review, in my experience.
Yes.
So they don't let you get away with too much.
Yeah.
So basically, the devices you're talking about are positioned on your site. They'll take out the TSS, which is total suspended solid, before they get to the detention basin or the retention basin. And that basin is, in your professional opinion, capable of, I mean, obviously, you're reducing by a few percent at least, and we might ask you to try to do it a little more, the impervious coverage, and it will be adequate?
Yes. And like I said, those two work together to further reduce the, or improve the TSS With regards to the landscaping, right now, we do have 24 street trees planted along Atrium Drive, as well as coming up the cul-de-sac. Originally, we did have plantings along the property line here, but that was prior to being, or adding the fire lane. So now there's a wall along the entire property line to accommodate that fire lane. Mark did make the comment about additional plantings, which I believe we can accommodate in the front yard, which I think would be more conducive than stacking it along the wall in the back. So we would basically comply with his requests in his review letter.
And as you know from interacting with this board, wherever you can put trees on site, whether they be in the front per his, so he's talking more about design standards of the BI zone or whatever, as it was when warehouses were conditional permitted use, which your application kind of qualifies, but then those went away, right? Because now the township has no warehouses permitted anywhere, which is why the last application, I think, went to zoning board, because in Mark's report, you see there's a bunch of, where he's showing pending or active applications, like the one you described. So, yeah, and so in terms of that, I would assume that you could put them, you know, pretty much, pretty much anywhere, because you're being asked by fire prevention to construct these extra fire lanes for the buildings, right? Which are hampering your ability to maybe comply with the design standards completely, but you're saying you can more or less comply with the spirit of them, in the sense that you can put more plantings in there. But elsewhere on site, do you have the ability to as well?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea to find a way to put as much landscaping in the front yard as possible. This warehouse is fronting across the street from our affordable housing development. That's after Mark's plan, Mark Healy's report, so it's not reflected in that. Obviously, this is a more permitted use in the business zone. The affordable housing on the surface is not a permitted use, but it's an adopted, part of our adopted plan. So there are going to be quite a few residents directly across the street. So any landscaping that can be added or directed, or any front yard improvement, maybe in width or whatever, I think would be called for. That might be something you consider if we have to come, I guess, it's a pretty foregone conclusion, we'll be coming back with this application, correct?
As far as I'm concerned, yeah, because, well, there's a number of things I want to discuss with the applicant, I'll let Craig get through his testimony, but there's a number of things that I don't think that with staff reports being almost two years old and sort of being held in abeyance until that, that I would be comfortable with the applicant just saying, we're going to testify to them, and I would like them to be, revise the plans, come and have the staff review them and come back. Yes.
If you have to come back, I'd appreciate you addressing that issue at some, some point in there. And I also realize that when the affordable housing project gets underway, there will have to be a particular attention paid on, you know, their part for buffering over there too. But this is a little bit close. And the second issue, you're tearing down a vacant building, you're starting with a clean slate. Why couldn't we get, or would you look at ways that we might get closer to 60% impervious coverage? It's nice you're reducing it three or 4%, but you're basically taking uncharted property there now. When you tear it down, you can do anything you want. It kind of looks a little crowded.
Yeah, and we were going to discuss these, I was going to let Craig get through his testimony, so just, you know, tell us the conditions, and before we hit these point by point. That's an excellent point, Bob, is certainly one we are going to discuss. I know Ted has a question in deference to him, I'm going to let him ask it, but let's continue, and then we'll.
Yeah, I mean, I'm pretty much down to just outlining the variances. Again, the lot coverage would be required as 60%. We're at 75.27. The front yard variance. The front yard variance for the Norly parking lot off of the cul-de-sac, atrium drive cul-de-sac, for lack of a better term. The number of driveways, currently, there are four. We have reduced it to two off of the main atrium drive and one off of the cul-de-sac, but still, the requirement is two. And then the waiver of sidewalks, and I think that was all of them.
Okay. Ted, go ahead and ask your question, and then we can maybe go through, I mean, most of this stuff in Darren's report, a lot of it is the same as in Mark's report. We'll get to Darren's report and let Darren ask any questions to, again, guide you tonight. But Ted, go ahead.
Well, Bob, just to reassure you, as I recall, I saw the proposed site plan for the affordable housing project, and they were putting a lot of trees in back of the structures there, sort of between the housing and atrium drive, so I'm not so worried about shielding, buffering there, because if they do what they propose, there'll be a lot on their side. And they've got a lot more, they have more room to put in more on their side. Well, one thing I wanted to ask about is, I'd like you to try really hard to save some of the existing trees along the cul-de-sac front, because it's always better to save existing trees if you possibly can. Obviously, all the trees that were in the parking lots have got to go, but there's some space there, at least the trees closer to the cul-de-sac. Your plan does show a bit of undeveloped strip there between the actual parking lot and the cul-de-sac. And your, the plan, the landscaping plan lists a lot, river birch trees, list them under the heading evergreen, which obviously they aren't, these little glitches. But you have what I think are a double row of them in front of the loading space, the loading docks. And I know Mark is always very strong on shielding the loading docks from the passersby, and it might be better to have real evergreens instead of the river birch there in front of the loading docks. Could provide some real screening from the street.
Yeah, I think that was actually the intent. So again, cleaning up the plans, you know, just getting that second round, we just kind of probably have to correlate things and kind of dot the i's and cross the t's. Again, work with Darren to kind of clean things up.
You specified having a lot of holly bushes, and I didn't really see where they were going. It's the trouble, we used to, you would get the big plans, you could really see what was going on, but if I got a look at it on a computer screen, I'm up there with a magnifying glass to try to read it, and I just didn't see where the holly bushes go, but that's not crucial. But I really hope you can save some trees, existing trees along the cul-de-sac front. I know I argued very strongly for saving some trees between the building that's under construction now and the pond there.
We were able to work that out too, so.
Good, good, yeah. Well, this is the same idea here, and you could probably, I wonder if you, you know, along the front of the building, if you could plant the trees a little closer together, you'd get more trees in that way.
Yep.
So I think those are my main. Oh, the environmental commission noted, you have two charging stations, for the size of this, you would eventually be required to have three charging stations.
Well, that's what I noted, it's actually, and I believe Derek incurred that it's actually two. So between 51 and 75 spaces, you only need two. So we put one for each building.
And that's correct.
Well, one for each building does sound rational.
Yeah.
I just noticed that in checking our. And another thing, if you can do something to make, well, ideally have a green roof on the warehouse, or have solar panels on the roof, or have, at the very least, a reflecting paint on the roof, it'll make the building cooler.
I'll leave that for the architect.
Yeah, okay.
Darren, did you have a?
Just two small things.
Yeah, go ahead.
Craig, when you were going through your variances, did you touch on driveway width?
Oh, you're right, yeah.
If you wanted to touch on that.
The driveway right here, which is for the truck court, is 65 feet, and I believe it's limited to 30?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. And that's just purely to get the proper circulation in and out of the truck court with the, for the larger trucks.
The way Mark's report read, I thought they were three driveways, all 65 feet wide. This is the only driveway that's 65 feet wide. The other two are standard width.
So you have one at the south end, and that's for the Solley parking lot. Again, the larger.
And that's a compliant width?
Yes.
Okay.
That's 26 feet. The larger one, which is 65, and then the other one is off of the cul-de-sac, like I said, and this is also 26 feet. So those all comply. And again, I think Mark kind of, when you read his letter, he, it seemed like the parking was off of the main atrium drive, and again, it's off of the cul-de-sac, which is the 20 feet here. Everything along the main atrium drive complies with the setbacks.
Okay.
Which I think is an improvement from, and you know, obviously, our planner will testify, but when you come down the main atrium drive right now, you have the parking pretty much right on top of the road. And then the building is, like I said, I think 33 feet from that easement line, and these buildings are 51. So you are creating a bit of a green space corridor along the main atrium drive.
Just to back up on that with Mark's comment, the reason why he is commenting that was because it is a cul-de-sac and a roadway. It's all private, but he wanted to treat both fronts to the same, as if this were a public road. So that's where that variance is coming from.
Yep.
One thing I was going to ask, Craig, since there's a possibility of you coming back, if you do, could you just provide a calculation for the fire lane area and percentage of impervious coverage to?
Yes.
That might be helpful to guide the board.
Yes.
Yeah, actually, let's talk about that now. So I think we, you calculated might be like 7%.
About 7%.
So 60 is what is the standard. 77 and a half is what is there now. Because of what is being asked of you from fire prevention, you're not able to meet the 60%. Now we're talking 67. I would like to see if we could finally get that impervious surface down a little bit more than 75.27. I'd like to see it like a little, you know, I'm willing to split the difference with you, but I'd like you to go back. All right? You don't have to tell me tonight, because you might have to look at the plans, you may have to, I would like to see it less. I mean, I suppose it could hold you to 67%, but I mean, I'm willing to do a little bit of, you know, good faith negotiation. But Bob is right. I mean, we had 77 and a half percent, you're demolishing both buildings. You're building two 75,000 square foot warehouses, which are small warehouse parlance. It's, I think would qualify as a low, a low intensity use in the new standards that we'll adopt at some point in time. But yeah, that's, it's, and there's other applications right in this area. So I don't, I don't, I think when you're starting from that position, you can do, you can do better. And so we're going to ask as a board to try to do better, as you can. And I mean, whether it's maybe parking, or, you know, you can't do much with the driveways from your, from your thing here, but I don't know, Darren, if you have any guidance where we could cut any, or give any guidance where impervious coverage could be reduced, but I'd like to see it more go towards 70. That would be, that was kind of splitting the difference.
And my recommendation, Craig, we just need to reach out to both Mark and I, we can kind of guide you through that.
Yep.
How about impervious pavement save for the passenger car parking lots?
I think it would be a good idea, however, like we discussed, there's no recharge.
Yeah.
So you're kind of dumping it into a bucket that won't empty.
You'd have to pipe it off to the same place.
Right, and then if you did that, then you'd have to end up raising the site, which would be not cost effective, I guess you could say.
Was there a specific reason this design was chosen? By that, I mean, two small warehouses, as opposed to one bigger one, which might give you more site flexibility, might reduce some of the variances?
I mean, I can, I can answer that. From our understanding and speaking with the client and speaking with potential buyers of this project, is that's what's marketable right now.
Okay.
There's also the point that if you have one large building, it might be more difficult to put in the loading docks, since you don't have any room to spare at the back. You'd have to have a narrower building in order to get the trucks around behind.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've designed this, you know, with the intention of it being circulated safely, but I will say, in handling a lot of these warehouse applications around the state, that 75,000 or so square footage is in the marketplace right now. You're seeing a slightly decreased demand for your 200, 250,000 plus square foot facility that we were seeing cropping up during the pandemic.
And you do, you know, with the Woodmont one, I think the one just to the right is about 340, and then there's a second building further to the north, which is about 110. So between all those, you do have a good variety, so hopefully, you know, you get good rental space in through that atrium drive corridor.
But you do have to make them fit in a little bit.
Yeah, no doubt about it.
Yeah, I mean, I always come in with the premise that I doubt an applicant builds something so it's not marketed and goes fallow. I mean, it's funny, again, you look at social media enough, and you're like, why are all these things not occupied? Well, because things change, right? Just these office buildings used to be occupied 100% at one point in time. That's no longer the way we live. And it may be that at some point in time, I don't know, 75,000 square foot warehouses go out and down, and the site gets rebuilt in some other way. That's just life. But we don't come in here thinking that you're going to propose something that's going to be not commercially viable, or leave the township with a vacant building. I don't think that's anybody's intent ever. Wouldn't make any sense. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not here to redesign it for you, but I'm here to like, I think we're here to just kind of try to guide you in looking at Mark's, you know, we need the color renderings, we need the elevations, I'd like the staff to look at those, I'd like the architecturals to be more obvious to the board. Because again, you know, I think it's an opportunity to make the site look as good as it can, which is going to help you, and it's going to help the town. Everybody, everybody who moves an eye, warehouse is going to want a nice place. But we just did those, you know, the elevations, all the stuff in Mark's report. And Darren, I don't know if there's, I kind of went through your report and kind of cross-referenced it with Mark. I don't know if there's anything you want to bring to the board's attention from your report specifically.
I think there's just two things I'd like to bring to the board's attention. The first would be just atrium drive in general. Other applications on this roadway have had to do test cores to establish whether there's going to be a milling, pick milling of the whole roadway, since it's a private roadway, and other applications have discussed it, and there's been discussion that there is a maintenance agreement between all the owners, is my understanding. But I just like, you know, it doesn't have to be tonight, but just to testify, if they're willing to at least give us the cores. The rest of the road that I've seen so far has a thicker pavement, so I think it's falling in line with most of this just being a mill and overlay at this point, and it's only real reconstruction would be forward curb returns, just to make the trucks work, but just want to bring that to the board's attention, that's one of the higher level comments that I did have. And then the only other one I had was just my question more than anything was in the construction of this. The rear of the building, you have a sculpture and staircases. How is this working? Like, it seems like you almost need an easement from the second property in order to take that out. There's going to be laydowns and everything else, so how are you guys going to approach that?
Well, the sculpture itself, from my understanding, is a cross easement and can be terminated between, without one or the other. The steps, on the other hand, are, have to be in agreement. And my understanding was that Peter Lanford was trying to reach out to the property owner of 700, and it has not had any luck. The way we've done it now is that the bottom of the steps meet the curb line of the fire lane. So we're going to continue to try and get that easement terminated if we could, but if we can't, that's the reason for the particular design.
Okay. I think we should discuss that more offline, too.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the construction of it, yeah, we have probably to look at that too, so.
Those are my main two.
Yeah, and just to respond to the cores, Darren's right, we've, we've gotten a copy of the cores up by Davidson. We did cores for Woodmont, and they seem to be consistent. It seems to be, and it makes sense, is that the road was assumed at some point to be a public road, if possible, if the, you know, the town will ever take atrium drive, so it was constructed that way. It does seem to be stable. The top surface, especially near, through the Woodmont, has got some potholes, it's more the top surface, so it's, like Darren said, the mill and repave would restore the pavement. I mean, it's, what, 45 years old now, so. But it just seems to be, in most cases, the surface course.
I guess I'll conclude with asking you the, sort of the same question that the chairman asked Darren, which is, after having reviewed his memo, is there anything in there that you don't think that we can update the plans to be in technical compliance with his comments?
I don't think so, and I agree with Darren, you know, we have the opportunity to go back to him, and if there's questions or concerns, we can coordinate with he and Mark. But, you know, I've got, this is the second round, and, you know, we've knocked quite a few off between the first and second. And, you know, we'll take what the board has said to us in mind, and, you know, try and address as many comments as we can, and then for the next meeting.
Yeah, no, that sounds good. Does the board have any other questions of Craig right now, for any of these things? Because this is, this is our shot to give them guidance, and so I want to make sure that, you know, we kind of empty that tank.
Yeah, I would just like to put on the record, given that this is essentially going to be a blank canvas, I see no justification for not meeting the current standards. That's all I got to say, based on how it's designed. I think you can go back to the drawing board and bring us a product that fits within our specifications.
We should probably talk about those. I do not know what the adjacent applications have required. I know that the board generally lately has voted in favor of sidewalks, because too often, you know, somebody contributes to the fund and nothing ever gets constructed, so. I don't know what, I also don't want sidewalks to nowhere, but, you know, there's also the argument that you never get a sidewalk complete unless you start somewhere. So I don't know how the board feels, but Charles, you're probably the most expertise here.
Yeah, we should put it on Mark to check the property that's to the right of it, I believe. Application came in there, and I forgot what we decided.
That was a waiver.
That was a waiver.
The only sidewalks, I've done, this is my fourth one. The only one that has sidewalks is the hotel.
Craig, and just for correction, I think you guys had to put a natural grass path, correct?
But that was on the north side of the smaller building, and that was around the bio-retention basins.
It was, but I thought, I might be incorrect, I thought there were some across the other base. I think you'd actually just grade it out that way to be 2% anyway. So if we could at least keep, I mean, well, obviously, the grades work, but I think the way you're building, you might be able to keep a 2% grass.
Oh, long atrium?
Long atrium, so you might want to consider that.
So you might want to consider that as well.
Yep.
Like the last project.
And of course, if you had sidewalks, that will just increase the impervious surface again.
I think that was the consensus on the, with the Woodmont project. You're just adding to the impervious coverage.
Okay, so you don't think, I think the boards, are you, Matt, Craig, do you have any questions, any, any clarifications for any of the staff reports? Mark's, I think, is pretty clear where we just need some improvement in the plans in terms of colorization, design, architecturals, et cetera. Any other questions for, for the board in terms of guidance at all?
I don't, I don't have anything. We do have our architect here tonight. If you want him to put his testimony in.
I think we could do that. I think since Betsy isn't here and I'm, I'm less concerned about traffic use, not that I wouldn't want to hear her testimony, I'm sure we could put it on record. We say Betsy. And, and we could also potentially save Kevin for the, the final one.
No, I agree with that. I think I, I would defer planning until we have our plans revised, consistent with the feedback that we've gotten. So what I would propose is we do architecture now. You'll see the rendering that we have prepared.
Very good.
And then we'll punt Betsy and our planner until the new date.
Okay. And, and, you know, the conversation we had tonight will make that go, I think, fairly smoothly. So, yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Brian, you want to come up?
Do we, and do we want to do, do public of Stires?
We'll do public after, after Brian. We'll do one whole, whole thing. There's not a whole lot of public here, but I'll, I'll do the public.
Great, sounds good. So Brian DeBarbieri is our architect.
Oh, one thing I forgot for Craig, maybe at the two corners at the left of the plan as we see it, there's maybe one tree there in each that could probably be saved.
Yeah, well, I'll take a look at the, the existing trees along the frontage.
Sometimes it turns out that one of the trees is dying anyway, but on the assumption that they're in good shape.
Yeah, I do recall some were a little rough along the frontage, but we can take a look at, yeah. I, I got your message, I'm clear, so.
No.
Do you, or did he, did he send you his?
Yes.
Yeah. Peter, if we can get him sworn in?
Absolutely. Trying to do without choking. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide us the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name and give us your address, please, for the record.
Yes, name is that Brian DeBarbieri. That's D E B A R B I E R I. What was the other question?
Address.
Address. The, my office address is 97 Chestnut Street in Rutherford, New Jersey.
And can you provide the board with the benefit of your professional credentials, please?
Yes. I'm an architect at the firm DeBarbieri Architects located at 97 Chestnut Street in Rutherford, New Jersey. I received my Bachelor of Architecture from Virginia Tech in 2012. I became licensed in the state of New Jersey in 2017. I'm also licensed in four other states, New York, Rhode Island, New Hampshire and Maine. I have provided testimony at other planning boards in the state, most recently Rutherford, East Rutherford, Parsippany, Edison and Kinnon, to name a few.
And your licenses are current and in good standing?
Yes, they are.
Sounds like you're qualified.
Thank you. So why don't you take the board through, well, see, I see you have some exhibits there. So do we want to mark those and then take it from there?
Yes.
Start with A3?
Yeah, A3 is, is next up. So wherever you'd like to start.
Okay. Yeah, so I just wanted to, I'll start with, I'll refer to the larger building.
Oh.
You might have to do your best Bono impression.
Does this detach?
There, there's always the one on the, on the. I believe that's, I believe that's a two button design perhaps.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Is that good? All right. So for the purposes of this, I'll refer to the larger building as building A and the smaller building as building B. So as mentioned previously, the, the footprint, building A, we have 73,460 square feet. I'll mark this as A3. And building B, we have at 72,213 square feet. I'll mark as A4. And so both of these buildings would be utilized as warehouse space comprised of storage racking and truck loading areas. And the buildings are oriented so their front entrances are facing atrium drive. And I'm just going to turn to the exterior elevation sheets. And building B is A6. So our, our building heights are just under 50 feet for both buildings when calculated using the average grade. And these building heights are based on a design to provide an interior clear height to the bottom of the roof structure of 40 feet, which is consistent with current market demands for these, for these building types. And just to go through some exterior design features, we are proposing both buildings to have a similar aesthetic to present as sister buildings. The front entrances, as mentioned, are, are facing atrium drive. They consist of glass storefront and canopies. And we also have ground level windows at these entrance corners for possible reception area and administrative areas. And the balance of the perimeter will consist of clear story windows for the purposes of providing natural light into the warehouse space. And we've, the, the facades of each building facing atrium drive will be painted with, with cooler, a cooler earth tone color palette in, in a way to present these facades as the, as the front of the building. And also, we will accentuate the, the building entrances with accent colors as well. And we'll carry the accent banding around the rest of the perimeter of the building at the base and clear story window lines in order to break up the height. And these buildings, both these buildings will be constructed of precast concrete panels. They'll have recess score lines to, to further break up the, the facade and the height. And just to go through, just some construction type and safety features of the building, these buildings will be state of the art and in full compliance of all building life safety, energy codes, fire safety. They'll be constructed of all non combustible materials and have a steel frame interior. The precast wall panels can have a fire resistance of up to four hours. And if you look at the plans, you'll see that there's personnel doors around the perimeter of the building. And the purpose of those are to allow access for the, the fire department around different points of the building. These buildings require minimal roof equipment and we use the larger footprint of these buildings to set this equipment back from the perimeter as to avoid this equipment being visible from ground view. And all this equipment will be fully compliant with state and local noise requirements. And some energy efficiency aspects, the exterior wall panels have an insulated core and they can provide high thermal resistance values. And the roof will also be insulated to conform with latest energy codes. The roof structure will also be designed to support future installation of solar panels. So this building will be, these buildings will be considered solar ready. The interior would be, would have LED lighting, which will also be on occupancy and daylight sensors. And I, I mentioned the clear story windows. These windows bring natural light into the warehouse, which will also reduce the amount of artificial lighting needed inside the, the warehouse space during the day. That's all I have. And any questions?
Yeah, I didn't look at the landscaping plan when the other witness was testifying, but this is the front of the building facing atrium, correct?
Correct, yes.
Is there any shrubbery, any, any landscaping contemplated in the front yard there? Is all I see is straight building with a few trees that probably are already existing.
Yeah, so I, we've done our best to align with the landscaping plan. But again, the, the concerns with the.
Well, is there something to break up the length of the building?
Well, yes, certainly the, the trees are intended to, to provide a.
Yeah, I would, that's part of the changes that we're getting, and, and Mark has stipulated that in his review. And that's kind of what I was saying is, you know, to, to meet the requirements of the trees and we'll add additional landscaping around those points.
Okay.
So like I said, we took out a substantial amount of trees along the rear property line and we're going to supplement and kind of like you're looking to do is kind of create more of a landscape enhancement in, in the front yard of both buildings.
Okay, the picture brought it up. I didn't, I would have asked it before, thanks.
And, and that's the other thing is, you know, with the renderings, they try to do the best they can to match up what we have. But again, we're, we're going to do an additional enhancement, so it'll look better, more so. But I think they also want to show the building, so.
Yeah, I think, I think that you guys know what we want. I think along atrium, the way it's landscaped now, if you go to Google Street View, if you drive alongside, it, it looks like a tree lined street. It's actually quite nice. You know, you, you're going to want to try to preserve that to the extent you can. If there's dead trees, you can do the infill. I'm less worried about that. And obviously, you're just going to comply with the chapter 222 in the best way you can onsite. Understanding that, you know, building renderings are designed to try to show us the building and, 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 you know, you're probably not throwing all the trees on the visual just because otherwise, you don't, you really don't get a, get a sense of what the building looks like. But, yeah, I mean, in, in terms of the, the design of the building, I don't really have any concerns. I think these are, 75,000 is a small, a small warehouse by any standard.
It is.
And so two of them together maybe make a medium one, but they function essentially as two small warehouses.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, if there are no board questions, or if some come up, we can go back, but I do want to open to the public. So make a motion to open to the public for any comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any members of the public wishing to come forward? Seeing no one, move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Of course, we'll open again when we come back. Last chance. I mean, the, the, when, when, when traffic comes, they're going to, it's going to be less traffic than it would be used as a office building. I mean, I don't think there's a question. I know exactly what Kevin's going to say. He could probably give his testimony. So this is your shot.
And we'll, of course, reserve the right to call Mr. Stires to talk about changes to plans.
I mean, he, he, and Brian will both be historically sworn, as it remains, yeah. Okay, now we have to do logistics. Christine, now I'll turn it to you.
So Matt, the next available time we have available, open is October 8th. Is that acceptable to you and your professionals?
Could I take a couple of minutes with the client?
Yeah, let's, you can take five.
Thank you.
All right, I do believe we have the, okay, folks, let's come back to order so we can finish up. The, the quicker we go back, the quicker we go. Okay, guys? All right.
I'll talk really fast.
Go ahead.
That date's acceptable. We'll be happy to carry the application. We would ask that it be carried without further notice.
Okay, so our deadline for action is July the 31st. Will you, will make it, what do you want to make it, like October or something?
Yeah, end of October. Do you want to, do you want a letter or an email, Peter, or?
Asking, we're very.
Or Christine, how would you? Letter and/or email?
Ask Peter. You could use an email if that's okay.
Okay, yeah, and we'll put it on the record. The applicant will extend time of decision.
And you will not need to re-notice because we had a hearing tonight and anybody who wanted to come will come to this hearing and now knows when it's being carried to.
When would you like the plan submitted by latest date? Three weeks?
Well, yeah, as soon as possible. So we're in, we're in July, so maybe August or so, because they need, the staff needs three weeks to look at the plans. So.
That's why I was.
And then I have to have, hold on, October. So for the October 8th meeting, so the week of September 29th, I have to start building the agenda. So it would have to be maybe September 9th. That would give us to the 23rd and then I build the agenda. Does that give you enough time? It gives you all of August and, and the first week of September?
Yeah.
Is that good or no? Are, are you okay, sir, the one on the end? I don't know your name, Brian?
Brian, yes.
Yeah, are you okay? Does he have to give new one or no? Just, just Craig?
I, I think, I think we've got what we need in terms of, I mean, if there's anything in the plans that you need to revise, but we now have seen colorized renderings, right?
Yes.
So I think you've, you've checked that off of Mark's.
This is the same as what's been submitted, just.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so we'll put this on the record correctly. 500 Atrium LLC, PLN 2300005 will be carried to October 8th at 7:30 PM here at 475 Demont Lane. And the carry to date, deadline date, I'm sorry, will be October 31st, 2025?
Confirmed.
Okay, Peter?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, Matt.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Christine, when is our next meeting?
Your next meeting is August 6th. That is going to be the B9 conditions that is going to be provided. That is going to be heard out at Route 27. I'll make sure that I put the big notice on, on the email when I send it to you. It is not starting at 6:30, just so you know. It's a regular 7:30. You may want to get there early because I've already heard from a couple of people, they want to be able to talk. So we, we might see a large gathering, so.
Say, I would never have expected that. All right, yeah.
Okay. And then that's it for August. I don't see you till September.
What date was that again?
It is August 6th. If anybody's not going to be there, if you could, you might know if you're on vacation or whatever, just let me know.
I'd like not to be there. All right, with that, thanks Christine. Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, drive safe.
Yeah, get home safely.